Welcome to the May 16th meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Counselor Kuchar, would you please lead us in salute to the flag?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, potential republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, flag.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Reagan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Dinatelli?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Squalia?
Present.
Counselor Van Hanzinger?
Here.
President Zarella?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
Present.
All right, thank you very much. Public forum, we have no remote participants or remote comments. Anyone wishing to speak on any item on the agenda may approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and the item on which you wish to speak, and you may speak for not more than two minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Counselors. My name is Stanley Young, resident of the city of Fitchburg. I'm speaking on items 09, 023, and item 09123. Raises for the mayor and city council become effective January 1st, 2024. In these economic times of inflation and cost of living, the taxpayers cannot afford such a raise of $37,000 for the mayor and $3,000 for city councilors. With a population of $45,000 nationwide at the median, the average is $80,064 for mayor. This is according to ZipRecruiter stats as of today, May 16th, 2023. Also, the average for mayor salaries within the Commonwealth with a population of 45,000 is listed at a median average of $77,312. In fact, the most recent listed salary for mayor of Lemonster is $81,593, with just a little over $3,000 more in their population. I wish for the council to consider not voting in favor of the final reading of these large raises on the backs of citizen taxpayers. I remain in opposition as a taxpayer as we cannot afford these reasons during this economic time. I thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to make one mention about the Police Memorial on Sunday at 10:00. I'm inviting all counselors, if you can show up, to please be there. There's also a dedication to Frankie, the canine that was killed in the line of duty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Wedgie, Fitchburg resident, on finance orders 134-23 and 135-23, you should not approve these grants because the post-retiree benefits are not accrued for and will fall on the city. It's time for another community to host the Monticicus Public Health Network and bear these costs for a change. It's not just the benefits. How much do we spend on electricity at Unitil's high rates for their computers to run all day, for their lights, for their photocopies, and everything else they use? How much for toilet paper, office supplies? How much additional space are we either cooling or heating above the level needed to keep the pipes from freezing, just for them? How much bottled water do they drink? Because while you force fluoridated city water in us, you won't drink it yourselves that make us pay for your bottled water. On ordinances 90-23, 91-23, 158-23, 159-23, and 160-23, labor is the city's largest cost and must be controlled. The best way to limit our property tax increases to 2.5% a year instead of using specious paper valuations to jack them up by double digits is to freeze pay. If you freeze pay and the employees want more money, they will find other places in the budget to cut. With high inflation, we the people are all tightening our belts, and you should too. It's especially bad that you're raising the pay of the solicitor when he has protected a sexual harasser in the administration. You should be cleaning house of him and the rest of the bad old boys.
We are not getting into personal attacks on individuals here.
Barron versus Kalunda, I have the legal right. And bringing in new people, you should be bringing in new people with less seniority, who will work for less, and most importantly, will have better values.
If there's no further public comment, we'll begin our announce, we'll have our announcements. The Fitchburg Historical Society, Saturday, May 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., will have a walking tour of the architecture and monuments of the Upper Common and Monument Park, led by Keith Chenault of the Fitchburg Historical Commission and Susan Navarre of the Fitchburg Historical Society. This is a Freedom's Way Hidden Treasures event as part of the Hidden Treasures Festival. On Saturday, June 3rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., the Historical Society will celebrate the 10th anniversary of Executive Director Susan Navarre coming to the society with pizza and cake. It's free and open to the public at the Historical Society Phoenix Building, 781 Main Street. For more information, 978-345-1157. Both events are free and open to the public. The next two meetings of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place Thursday, May 18th, and Thursday, June 1st, from 4 until 5:30 p.m. in room 203 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center.
Can I interrupt?
Go ahead, this is your announcement.
The meeting on 5:18 is not going to take place. It was, it had to be moved back to 5:11 last week because there's graduation of Fitchburg State on Thursday.
Gotcha. Okay, so this will be only June 1st then, from 4 until 5:30, room 203, Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. Let's see, we have, where did I put those? Friday, May 19th, and Saturday at 7:30 p.m., and Saturday at 2:00 and at 7:30 p.m. All Bark No Bite, presented by the Stratton Players at the New Players Theater Guild, 15 Rollstone Street in Fitchburg. Hilarious and touching comedy about romance, and it's supported by the Fitchburg Cultural Alliance, who provided the rehearsal space, and the Fitchburg and Lemonster Cultural Councils, with thanks to the New Players Theater Guild for performance space. Tickets are $15 and can be reserved by email at Strat, by emailing strattonplayers@gmail.com, or you can pay cash at the door, there will be street parking available. You can also bring in a donation for the Fitchburg Lemonster Animal Control and receive three free tickets for a basket raffle. Preferred donation items are canned dog food, dog treats, bottles of bleach, rolls of paper towels, and pate-style cat food. Tuesday, May 23rd, during lunch hours at the Fitchburg High School, the city clerk, the Fitchburg City Clerk's office will be doing a voter registration drive for students 18 and up between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m. And actually, she had asked me to clarify on this, only students 18 and up can register to vote, but students 16 and 17 can preregister so that they will be registered when they turn 18. All students are welcome to stop by and learn about this essential responsibility of citizenship. And lastly, at Uno's Pizzeria and Grill, there will be a fundraiser to benefit Longs Joe Middle School, May 19th, 2023. This is Uno's 905 Miriam Ave in Lemonster, this is in the plaza, and you can call 978-466-7808 for more information. Uno's will donate up to 20% of your check to Longs Joe Middle School. And now we will begin our scheduled items. Report of the Committee on Records, Counselor Boishman.
Mr. Chair, we have two. We get the weekend in April 26th, we talked about the four right in that one, and the weekend in May 2nd, all seem to be in order.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion.
To approve.
Okay, motion and second to approve the report of the Committee on Records with no objection, it is unanimously approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor. A new appointment letter of Ms. Jacqueline Cronin as city auditor and finance director for a three-year term from June 17th, 2023 to June 17th, 2026, that will stand referred to appointments. And we have memorandums of, memorandum of agreement between the city of Fitchburg and the inspectors SEIU 888 group, and also the SEIU 888 Wastewater Facilities group, those will both stand referred to finance. Report of the Finance Committee, Counselor Dinatelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on May 10th and took up a slew of orders. If there's any counselors that would like to have me speak on a specific one, I will, but every order was unanimously adopted.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, did I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is unanimously approved. Unless any counselor objects, we will waive the reading of the multiple finance orders 13023 through 14623, and those will simply stand referred to finance. Seeing no objection, they are referred. And then we have 14723, a loan order in first reading, that the loan order 15322, ordered by this council on June 21st, 2022, which authorized borrowing of $30 million for various sewer separation projects, is hereby amended in its entirety to read as follows. If it's all right with everyone, I'm not going to read out the whole detail, the main thing that jumps out is that it's $36 million. If anyone has further questions about the language, we can certainly get into that, but I believe we have our assistant auditor here to answer questions on the loan order itself, or on the amendment. Counselors, it is before you. Oh, Counselor Fleming?
Just a quick question. I don't recall why it's gone up $6 million. And is it going to go up further next year?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the specifics of the project, but we can certainly get back to you with that. I wasn't prepared to speak on this issue, so.
My apologies.
Yeah, but I would, yes, we can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure it's a specific project.
Given that this will require two readings anyway, for the avoidance of delay, my recommendation would be that we approve the first reading, and then if we choose not to approve the second reading, once we have more information, we can certainly do that. But this way, we've, we'll have the first reading done so that if we do decide the second reading should pass, then we aren't delayed by two weeks. Counselor Squalia?
Yeah, just to note from the DPW communication, it notes the additional $6 million is due to rising construction costs due to recent inflation and significant increases in cost from construction materials. Pipe condition during the investigation phase, significant sewer pipe degradation was observed that requires pipe replacement rather than sewer rehabilitation. Drain upsizing and climate resiliency, preliminary modeling results indicate that more extensive drain upsizing may be required. And green infrastructure, in recent years, the city has been pursuing MVP action grants for design of green infrastructure, and they are including this in the addition.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fleming?
Was that an email we all got?
It is in our packet this week on page 77 of 135.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. President, I think he talked about it to us before. I think that's in a ward they're doing to get sewer separation, and Melissa Fleming's ward where they're going to put green, and make the trees and that.
Yeah, I think there had been a prior mention of, we'll probably be coming before you for increased costs in the future, so this would be that. Counselor Dinatelli?
Just so the public knows that it could have gone up $15 million, we still have to pass it. We don't have a choice, based on the consent decree. No, I'm just explaining to the public that, you know, it's a lot of money, but this is our federal government forcing this on us, so.
Motion for its first reading.
Second. Second.
I have a motion and second, pass this loan order through first reading. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a, I believe we need a two-thirds vote on this.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Reagan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dinatelli?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hanzinger?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Unanimous, 11 votes. Thank you very much. I would like to take up a motion for suspension of the rules on the budget orders 4823 through 5723, to refer all of them to a council as a whole meeting on May 22nd.
So moved.
I have a motion and second, any objection? All right, that will pass, so these will stand referred to council as a whole on May 22nd. We have an ordinance, we have ordinances in final reading. Counselor Kuchar?
According to this, this is May 16th?
No, this, this is.
Oh, this is.
Sorry.
Mr. President, I must recuse myself from 9023.
Yes, go ahead. 9023, we've voted on this several times before, this is the mayoral salary increase, and it is in final reading, it is now before the council.
Make a motion, we accept the final reading.
On the motion, I see Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I wrote a letter on both. Can we take 09023 and 09123 together?
We can't because Counselor Dinatelli needs to recuse from the first, but not the second.
Can I read the letter now?
You may, yeah.
All right. I wrote a letter to the, to my fellow counselors, it says, "To my colleagues on the city council, I cannot in all good conscience vote to approve salary raises for the mayor's position and our city council position. An almost 50% raise to the mayor's salary and a $3,000 salary raise for each of us will not help the city as we continue to make progress. I truly believe that a 20% raise for the mayor's position with a cost of living increase, as well as a cost of living raise for us, is a more reasonable alternative. Here is why. The city of Fitchburg clearly is making progress with economic development. Our leaders, former and current, including Mayor Dinatelli, have helped to make the progress we see, but there is still much progress to be made. Many of our roads are in need of repaving. Major road paving is what an overwhelming majority of constituents want the city to accomplish. Mayor Dinatelli recently estimated that it would take $75 million to get our roads back in shape. Now, it might be said that these salary raises alone will not produce enough money to get the roads back in shape, that is true, but we need to make decisions, big and small, that allow the city to pave more roads by putting more city funds towards road paving. If state officials see such a commitment by the city, they might possibly give us more Chapter 90 funds for our roads, or assist us with some other state program. My opposition to the mayor's salary is not a reflection on Mayor Dinatelli's job performance, nor is my opposition to the city council salary increase a reflection on your performance. It is a principled opposition in that a 50% raise is too much all at once. For us, I think that a cost of living increase is reasonable, especially in the light of escalating costs everywhere. I share one final thought. If you still don't agree with me on my argument to amend these salary increases, I would hope that you would delay the vote on these salary increases until we finalize the fiscal year 2024 budget. Waiting for the budget to be finalized is the right thing to do, at the very least. Sincerely, Bernie."
Thank you, Counselor. So, with respect to that position, I would not favor either voting this down or delaying it. Delaying it, I think it would be a mistake because we've been told by our current auditor that passing this before the budget is necessary to get the budget lined up properly. That's why we've been going through some procedural hoops to get it moved along when we hit some snags. But as far as the larger argument, I get it. I get entirely that voting a salary increase for the council and the mayor in a year that all sorts, that everyone's seeing rising costs and that the city's seeing a tight budget, the optics aren't great, but like we discussed when we first discussed these salary changes, I think the numbers are still right. And in total, we're talking about roughly $60,000 to $70,000, I'm not going to trust my mental math right now, but it's in that ballpark. It's not nothing, I don't want to say it's nothing, but in terms of our ability to afford other things, this isn't even a drop in the bucket, in terms of particularly road paving. This entire thing, if we keep our salaries frozen where they are, much less a smaller increase, we would be able to pave about 0.6% of a mile of road. It's, it's not moving the needle. It's, it's to me, and again, with full respect to Counselor Schultz's position, to me, it sounds kind of like, you know, counting coins to try to save up for a replacement car. You're not going to get there. So I would support sticking with our prior decision and moving forward with this. Counselor Squalia?
Thank you, President Zarella. While I disagreed with the drastic mayor's salary increase, and while it's difficult for counselors to vote on their own salaries at any point, the one thing that I like about what we did was that we tied this salary to a cost, a cost of living increase based on CPI, the Consumer Price Index, so that hopefully this conversation doesn't really have to happen for a very long time, and counselors don't have to vote on their own salaries or the mayor's salaries for a very long time. And this was based on, that Lemonster does the same thing. So, and on the counselor's salary, not the mayor's salary, the mayor's salary in Fitchburg will be much more than the Lemonsters' mayor's salary, but in Fitchburg, the counselor's salary will be equivalent to the Lemonster city counselor's salary after this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will note, just for clarification, that the tying it to CPI is something we're going to have to vote on in, after the budget is done, because we hit some legal snags with the state on our original form of the ordinance, we've got to just tweak the language to get it to do what we want, but that will still happen, it's just not done yet with this ordinance. Anyone else on 9023 specifically? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Could I comment?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
Well, I, close, I respectfully disagree with your, you know, saying that it's, you know, coins, that we're like collecting coins to buy a replacement car. I think that, you know, that, as I said to one counselor recently, you know, we have to put all these, all these savings together, and, you know, you're saying, well, the budget, we need to do it because the budget, that'll help the budget, well, I'm sure that the money could be used elsewhere if we, if we decided to use it elsewhere. And, I mean, it costs us $400,000 a year to fill the potholes in this city. We've got to, we've got to start somewhere where, geez, we, you know, here's $50,000 here, here's $100,000 here, I mean, otherwise, you know, it's, well, we'll take money from free cash and we'll, we'll pave a road, but, you know, that's, you know, that's at the whim of the administration, that's not, you know, we don't know if that's going to ever be done, you know, we have to, and, and city counselors really don't have any say in which roads are paved, as you know, and they shouldn't either. I agree with that decision, but I don't agree with the giving the mayor a raise at this time because we're hearing, because of the rising costs, we're hearing shortfalls everywhere, and we're going to be presented, I think, like you said, the optics, not just the optics, it's, it's, where's the money going to come from to pay for these shortfalls? So, that's, that's my point of bringing this up at this time.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
And, and I'd just like to clarify, what my comment on getting it done so the budget can be done was not that it'll help the budget, like, number-wise, but that if we were to hold off on this until after the budget, we would then have to make some budgetary transfers to cover it if we passed it later.
Which is done all the time.
Sure, sure, I'm just saying, that's what was, that's why it was requested of us. Counselor Boishman, second time?
Second time.
Oh, no, first time for this one.
Let's not get carried away.
My apologies.
Hey, listen, I want to say something right now, to correct the, the counselor to my right. It's over half a million dollars we, we put in for potholes and that, we count in labor, over a half a million dollars, over $500,000. On the pay raises, I voted for the pay raises, and I believe wholeheartedly on the pay raises. I believe, and I'll say it again, when you hire a person that comes into this city and is the head of the department, and he's making more than the mayor, and he's only got six or eight people behind him, and that's all he's responsible for, it's ludicrous, it's crazy. I think the mayor's job should have been, and I believe, and I said it before, and Burn, and Counsel Bernie, pardon me, had $160,000. If you look at the towns around us, even though they have planning departments, I mean, management, what do you call those? Town managers, they make more than the mayor, and they get smaller towns, and they make more than the mayor, and the mayor's still got the same kind of work that they have to do, he's responsible for every department head, he's got an answer to us. If you don't like what he's doing, we kick him out, not a certain few kick him out, not the council, the people of Fitchburg. So all in favor of this. For the counselors who feel this is a great unfairness, you know what you can do? Next week, when this passes, go to the city clerk's office and tell her, I don't want the raise, I don't want the CPI, the cost of living increase, and put it back into the budget. Nobody's going to stop you. I'm not stopping you. But I believe if you want good competition, if you want good qualified candidates, you got to give them something. I read an article in the Wall Street Journal that said they can't get enough people to run, because the benefits ain't there, and people don't want to do it. It's a, it's a tough responsibility, and, and you have to deal with a guy like me in your ward, and I'm on the phone yelling and screaming at you because you got a pothole, and I've been talking for six weeks about that pothole? Really? You want to put up with that? I don't want to put up with that. I really don't. But, and then you're going to go out and, and you're down at the banks of the Nashville River carrying up a couch that's 72 years old? Really? Come on. They deserve everything they get, whether it be me or anybody else. The job is a tough job, and you don't make friends on the council, you make enemies. I already know I lost some friends already, don't even want to talk to me, because I didn't vote their way. But so be it.
I still like you, Paul.
So, I just feel, I just feel, you know, I just feel that the mayor deserves it. In my way, if I had my way, he'd get $160,000. If, no offense to the chief, we gave him almost $160,000, and everybody says he's, we need it to get competition, so there you go, you answered your old questions. We need it to get competition, good quality competition, and if the people don't like the job he's doing or I'm doing, and like Marcus says all the time, vote me out. Simple, just vote us out. That's all you have to do. All right, I make, I already made the motion, and.
I'll be, I'll be very.
You're, you're up three, no? I gotta have the rule.
I just was going to make way, Paul, can we afford it? You know, can we afford it? That's all I was going to say.
All right. Any further comment on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Reagan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
No.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Squalia?
Nay.
Counselor Van Hanzinger?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Definitely yes.
Seven yes.
All right, that passes seven to three. Counselor Dinatelli, you may re-enter, and we'll take up 9123. I would ask that any arguments that have already been made that pertain equally to 9123 be left as they are, but obviously, I'm not going to enforce that, I'm just requesting because we all want to get home, but.
Move to send 9123 through its third and final reading and hold it in and advertise.
I have a motion and second for 9123, anyone on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Reagan?
No.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dinatelli?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
No.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hanzinger?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Eight yes.
All right, that passes by eight to three. 10723, this is another ordinance in final reading. This is the one regarding the establishment of the part-time civilian police dispatcher position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second, it passes through its third and final reading. Any comment? Is there any objection? Then it is unanimously accepted. 12223, this is, and 12323, these are the water and sewer fee changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Boishman?
On a motion, I'm going to, I'm supporting these. I just want to make it very clear to the department heads, so they understand. I voted for the rate increase, so we replace water mains and sewer lines, that do the both, water mains and sewer lines. I didn't vote for this, so they take my bill and they pave curb to curb on the city streets. That's not part of the program. What I want them to do is pave where they cut up. They cut up, they go up in the middle of the street, they pave that one area, not the whole street.
Understood, Counselor. So, it will ultimately be up to the department heads to make those decisions, but your opinion on that is noted for the record.
Mr. President, Mr. Chair, the reason why I bring it up, I'll give you a prime example, and I can back my statement.
Counselor, I understand where you're going with this, but at the moment, all we have is, are we going, are these increases appropriate or not? Anything to do with departmental policy is a discussion for another evening.
But as a council, can't we send them a letter and say, this is what we expect?
We could. It would be something that you would bring before the council as a non-binding resolution on another agenda.
All right, I'll do that.
All right. Counselor DiNatale?
Yeah, the increase for the water rates specifically, the sewer rates, I would hope by now that our constituents know the reasons why those are going up. They've been going up since 2012 because of the mass federal consent decree. And for those who tell us that we should defy that decree, we did in the beginning. And I don't think people remember what happened to us. We were levied a fine in excess of $300,000. They weren't playing games with us. On the water rate side, I have to stress that our water rates have not been increased in six years. And water is a very precious commodity of our cities, and I think far too many people, including myself, take it for granted what quality clean water means to this city. Everyone looks at the word "increase" and they don't care that it wasn't increased for six years. Apparently, people think that things should never go up, that costs never increase. Also, this is not a run-of-the-mill increase for operations. This is for capital infrastructure improvements, which we cannot do without this. We did it six years ago, it's why streets like Shea Street, for example, where those residents were plagued with brown, dirty water for years, they were before this council six years ago begging us to raise the rates to fix the pipes. People don't really want to think about these things until we have a Flint, Michigan. And then who's going to get blamed if we have a Flint, Michigan? The 11 of us. Because we didn't increase the rates when we needed to, to replace the more than 100 miles of piping. The water lines in this city are similar to the roads. Massive. The only difference is, this is an enterprise fund, we do have control over the rates. The roads, we do not, in terms of raising extra revenue. That's for the taxpayers to decide through a ballot initiative, whatever that may be. So, I said at the meeting, I am not going to be held responsible for having the water department and the experts tell us, you have 100 miles of piping, half of which is in failure, and this is what it's going to cost to fix, and we say no because of optics, we want to look like we're looking out for the little people. No, we're hurting the little people. Because what's worse for them is unclean, unsafe water. And we'll be the first people attacked if we don't do this. I've seen it before. So while people don't like the word "increase," and they don't like that it's happening now, I've got news for everybody. 16 years here, it's never a good time to raise these things, never. When it's a good economy, a bad economy, no one likes the word "increase." But most of my constituents have already told me they're okay with this, because it's for our water system, it's for infrastructure upgrades, and it's to keep the high quality of water that we already provide them. And we provide very good quality water. And I don't take it for granted anymore. And when I look at my bill personally, five cups of large coffees at Gourmet Donuts is more than what I pay for water in a month. So, while everything is going up, water should not be held hostage because of everything else. We need to do this now, it's long overdue. And as Counsel Boishman said, my aim, my hope is to see Mr. Delain before us very soon with a loan order, telling us what streets they're going to start digging into and ripping out those pipes and replacing them. That's what I want to see, that's what the residents want to see, and they will see it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just second the point that this really is of paramount importance specifically to our lowest-income residents, because if I went home this evening and found out that my water was suddenly coming out brown or even black, I could afford to live off bottled water for the next several months while an underfunded water department gets around fixing it. Not everyone can. So, it's exactly the people who can least afford to be hurt by this, who would be hurt if we said, well, we can't do this, because it may not be a lot of money for me, but it's a lot of money for some people. Those "some" people are exactly the people who would not be able to easily endure a period of unclean, unsafe water if our pipes fail. So, that being said, anyone else on the motion? Is there any objection? Seeing none, it passes, they both pass unanimously, 122 and 12323 are both passed through their third and final reading to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Next, we have 15823 in first reading. This is an ordinance change to reflect the contractual increase. In other words, this is not a discretionary change where someone decided the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor need more money. This is their ordinary salary increase, but because their salary is set by ordinance, we need to actually change the ordinance to reflect that, rather than just allowing it to happen by operation of the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment on the motion? Seeing none? Any objection? It is passed unanimously through its first reading. 15923, also in first reading. Actually, I'm going to take 159 and 16023 together. I believe they are paired. These are also to do with contractual increases. What I understand, and I would ask that anyone correct me if I'm wrong, but I am given to understand that what's happening essentially is, we're knocking off the lowest two steps in our pay matrix, and adding two steps on the other end. This is just because the lowest two steps are too low at this point to attract new hires, and there needs to be more room for growth at the upper end as people work longer for the city. I don't have any more details on this than that, other than what's in the packet, but...
Motion to approve.
Counselors? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. On the motion? Seeing none? Any objections? Seeing none? It is, they are both unanimously passed through their first reading. We have one petition that we have a request for suspension of the rules. This is 10823. If the council has no objection, I'll summarize rather than reading it out. This is simply taking those civilian dispatchers that we just established via the previous ordinance, excuse me, and making them special municipal employees, as we've done with several categories of employees in recent months. This is so that people who are currently in city departments but who have dispatcher training can be paid as civilian dispatchers in their off-hours, without presenting a conflict of interest under the state conflict of interest statute. Counselor Squalia?
This would be a situation where, like, a Pittsburgh police officer could take overtime working as a civilian dispatcher?
I believe they already do that. This would be more for if someone, say, I'm not sure what department was mentioned before, sorry, DPW? Yeah, like, if we had a DPW personnel who had been previously involved in either fire or law enforcement or something, and was qualified to do the job, then Chief Martineau could bring them on as a civilian dispatcher in addition to their current city salary. If they're designated special, they can do that. If they're not, they can't receive two separate pays from the city. Counselor Fleming, I'm sorry, does that answer your question?
So this basically gives us more ability to reach and get more employees, especially in times of need.
Exactly. And it avoids excluding existing city employees from the opportunity to take on this. Oh, and here we have Chief Martineau, actually. We're just discussing the special municipal employee bit for the dispatchers.
Yeah, I was asking an example of what another department would be, that we would need a special municipal employee designation.
First of all, I apologize, I was at Chief Cronin's thing at the Historical Society.
No problem at all.
Please, again?
So, it's 10823 for part-time civilian police dispatchers, to make them special municipal employees. And I was just asking President Zarella what an example of...
Perfect. Good question. Specifically, that designation was currently for one employee. I have a civilian clerk who works at the police station. Prior to her becoming a civilian clerk, she was a 911 dispatcher, fully trained. So she's a full-time civilian clerk for me. She kept her skills as a 911 dispatcher. She's been working part-time for the Lemmster Police Department, which made no sense. She could go one or two days a week from her clerk's position right downstairs to the 911 center and assume those duties. So that designation was specifically caveat for her in this situation. I could see how it could apply to some other employees in the city. Firefighters, they're 911-trained. If they wanted to come on as a per diem dispatcher, they would have the ability to do so. Being a city employee as a firefighter with that special designation, we could pay them as per diem dispatches.
And with concerns of hiring, being able to hire enough employees to fill the shifts or whatever, then this gives you more ability to kind of reach into more city departments to be able to do that.
It does. The whole reason we really focused on bringing in per diem part-time dispatches is to alleviate the amount of forced overtime our current dispatchers have. You've heard me say to this council many times, that the challenge is hiring dispatches. It continues. We were budgeted for 12, we were down to eight. Yesterday, I'm down to five. When you're down to five, that's a forced overtime every day of the week. If you continue to force those five, I'm going to be down to two. And then I'm going to have police officers in that room. We've seen different versions of that. Police officers cost a lot more money. That's why we hired civilian dispatches to begin with. So, this is just an opportunity to alleviate those forced overtimes, to bring in trained people, to augment our workforce in the special designation that's specifically for city employees, where they're already employed, whether it's fire department, clerical, they have the opportunity to work in another role for the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Counselor Fleming?
Okay, I just want to clarify, at a different rate, at the rate for the dispatcher, they wouldn't be getting overtime, which is what I heard.
They are, yes, they are getting overtime. When they're working, there would be an overtime shift no matter what. So, they're coming in, and we're paying our part-time dispatchers at what we determined was going to be an overtime rate. We use step six under the matrix, the city matrix, so it stays consistent. But if you look at our overtime rate, our dispatchers are making 30 to 90 an hour at an overtime rate. So we're paying our per diem folks to come in when there's going to be overtime. Per diem employees won't be working unless there's a vacancy. So one way or the other, I'm paying overtime. This alleviates forced overtime. This alleviates me bringing in a police officer at $55 an hour, which happened a lot this year. Our overtime budget, as you're well aware, blew up, because I was bringing police officers into the dispatch center at this exorbitant rate. So, yes, it would be on overtime, because it is to augment the workforce in there. I could never get anybody to come in there on straight time, it wouldn't be attractive.
Okay, thank you.
And, oh, go right ahead.
I move that we suspend the rules to consider this currently.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for reminding me that we had forgotten that. Can I have a second on a motion?
Second.
All right. Unanimous consent? All right. And thank you, Chief.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boishman?
Chief, got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I go back to the dispatchers.
Yes, sir.
Before you hire, take on these part-time, to come in for overtime. The present dispatchers allowed to stay as long as they want? Are you sending them home after 12?
No, no, they're, contractually, they can work up to 16 hours. We do not allow them to work over 16 hours, for obvious reasons, being alert in a room, we're all well aware, how many calls come in for service each and every day in there. So, our dispatches, through their collective bargaining agreement, they have first right to any and all overtime in there. This is an opportunity for me to provide less burnout in that room, where they're not getting forced to work overtime. So by creating a small pool, we've only had five or six applications for part-time dispatches, because you have to be trained, you have to be fully trained under 911. And these people that have applied, they're a full-time dispatcher in Westminster, they're a full-time dispatcher in Lemmster. This will give them an opportunity to come into the city. So, dispatches will always have first right through the collective bargaining agreement to work the overtime. This is just to prevent burnout.
Okay, I get no problem with that, and I understand about the burnout, but I just want to make sure that they have the first rights before anybody else.
It's guaranteed through the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, all right.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 10823. If there is no objection, it is unanimously approved. Next, we have 16123, which will stand referred to Legislative Affairs. 162 through and including 17023 will stand referred to Public Works. And that concludes the order of business.
Motion adjourned. Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.